Good evening and welcome to the October 23rd, 2018 Town of East Hampton zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We have a full agenda this evening. We start off with four public hearings and then we'll go into a work session and a couple of determinations and resolutions. So we'll get started right away with our first public hearing. The applicant is Nicholas Warsick, pardon me, Warswick. Lot size and location is 109-303. I guess that's...I can't believe it's 109...I don't know. That can't be 109,000 square feet. No, that's not...What do we have on there? Anything? Anyway, I'll read this off. Lot size and location, 109-303, comma, 1 Clinton Street, map of Turtle Hill Farms filed 7/24/2001, Springs, tax map number 300-78-7-16. And actually, we can look on the lot area here from the survey is, it is in fact 109,303. Yes, it is. Yeah.
It's a large property.
Yes. So, the description here is to allow an approximately 220-square-foot pool house with outdoor shower to remain on the property. The relief sought is one variance of 20 feet, pardon me, 20 square feet from 255-11-23, limitation on accessory structures to allow a 220-square-foot pool house to remain where a 200-square-foot is a maximum allowable and any other relief necessary. The zoning district here is A5 residence, the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
We do have the affidavit of service and posting. Appears that notice was proper.
Thank you. And this is in Board Member Delane's district. Roy, if you would please, your field report.
Yes. I'm down below Clinton. So I was there and there's a photo of the posting. This is the entrance to the property. What you're looking at is a common driveway. It's a shared, shared common, what do they call it? Yeah, common driveway. It's a shared easement through the applicant's property for the other houses in the neighborhood. So the houses, this is the corner of the property that fronts with Clinton. Just taking a look through the, you can see, actually, I walk into the property now, you can see the house beyond the woods. Just give you a sense of what this area is about. Again, now looking back at the common driveway. So this is standing on the common driveway, looking at the pool house now from the common drive. And then I swung over and took a picture of the main house. Now, I entered the property, I am facing the main house, and I took a photo of the main house. The pool house is behind me, and the next photo will show you standing, look at the pool, pool house. So the pool house is kind of like a split thing with a roof structure over it. So looking at the one side of it, I'm going to scan to the left here on my photos. Next photo, there's fireplace, and you see the left side, and there's the left side. Go ahead, next photo. This is, there's a powder room, pool house. This is the outdoor shower. Is in question?
I think that's it. Great. Thank you, Roy. Yeah, I visited the site. That was a nice site report there. Any questions, board members from Roy? No? Okay. Do we have the agent for the applicant? Or the applicant? Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. Susanna Herman and Consultants, 1319 North Sea Road, Southampton, for the applicant. I have some photos as well. A lot of them are very similar, but I wanted to hand these in. The difference, the two photos that I captured that weren't captured in the ones that you see here, figure three, and I'll hand these up in a second. This is stepping back, looking at this back corner where the outdoor shower is.
Yep.
And what I want you to notice in this picture is that the roof that covers the outdoor shower in question is integral. It's all one.
Sure.
The drainage, all the, it's designed so the drainage from the whole structure comes down to this corner, and then there's dry wells over here. And also, I have a picture of the interior which shows that there's no connection to the, I mean, the interior of the shower, which shows there's no connection to the rest of the pool house. You can't access it that way.
Yes, yeah.
And then I have an aerial photograph, which you guys may have as well. But you can see how densely this entire area is vegetated. This is all this property. So I'll hand out these copies.
When was that aerial taken? The date on that aerial, was that recent?
It's from Google, or it's 2013.
2013.
And in my photo, too.
Okay, thank you.
And the edge of clearing is also shown on the survey. As was mentioned previously, it is 109-303 square feet. So it's over 2.5 acres. And we're talking about 20 square feet of relief. And the way this came about is when the building plans were submitted, it didn't occur to anyone that a roof over an outdoor shower would be counted towards the 200 square feet of pool house that night. So it was built according to the plans that the architect drew and that were approved by the building department. So they build exactly what was on the plans. Building department didn't point out to them or call and say, hey, you need to revise your plans. This doesn't conform.
Right. And we have a very thorough, thorough set of the plans from the pool house in the file that we reviewed as well, just so you know that.
Okay.
Or you submitted them.
It's not impacting anyone. As I said, it's very well screened. The property is under-cleared by over 2,000 square feet. It's way under allowable total building coverage and total lot coverage. They could have built much, much more here. And it's a beautiful site. It's really well done. They've left the trees. They've left a lot of natural area. And as you can see, this is all one roof structure. And only this blasted part here, plus the little powder room, constitutes the actual pool house.
Yep.
Then what's on the other side?
This is all porch. This is open. This is a barbecue. And there's a little shed, which you can see on the survey.
Yeah, and I walked around the back, and I looked, and there were storage doors behind that shed.
Right. As I know, it's a storage shed. There was plumbing in it and stuff like that.
So it's really like two accessory buildings sharing a roof or something was the concept, I guess.
Right. And if they were to remove the roof over the outdoor shower, that would really be a disaster for the building.
In terms of architectural integrity?
And also in terms of the structural integrity, the drainage would be a problem.
It's pitched behind the parapet wall?
It's flat, but it's pitched so that all the drainage goes to that area.
What's a little bit confusing to me is on the left side of that, we're calling it a shed, but it looks like it's part of, it's contiguous with the pool house because it does have a kitchen area or a kitchenette there, and it has full plumbing, it has a plumbing heater inside. So one, you know, it's like, it's, almost looks like it's contiguous with the pool house, but whatever it is.
I mean, this, you were there.
I was.
This is all open.
Right, but to the left there, that's a kitchenette.
Right.
That's a kitchenette.
And that's a little shed. It's only 6 by 12, that little shed there.
Right, okay.
So I, it would be well over, I mean, a bare minimum $50,000 to remove the roof over this part of the pool house. And this was how the building department approved the plans.
Right. We understand that. Yeah.
So, in light of the fact that it's not causing any environmental damage whatsoever, it's not impacting any of the neighbors, it's well-screened, it's completely within the character of the neighborhood. I understand you don't want to set a precedent, but this is not, not a shower roof that's going to impact anyone. You couldn't access this. It can't become part of the pool house itself with an interior connection without spending a lot of money. And that's not what they wanted. They want an outdoor shower.
Is this going to be, on the survey, they show vegetation, you know, edge of lawn. I noticed there is some lawn, you know, we know where the lawn is right there. But per this survey here, I think the last, received August, we received it August 20th.
This is the final.
The vegetation, are you planning on vegetating where it says along Gardner's Lane, I believe it is, or that side, it would be the northern side? Vegetation, vegetation, vegetation. I know a lot of it's trees, but are you planting on vegetating that? Because I was there today, and to the left of that photo, the left of that planting on the pool side, it's kind of rugged, yeah, right where your hand is. And I was just wondering if that is going to be vegetated eventually.
To the left side? That's grasses, right?
Yeah, for a little bit it is. But then, you know, Roy, between there and the driveway, it's kind of, but I guess it's all within the lot.
That's almost like a secondary entrance. Almost looked like it was a secondary entrance to...
And that's the only other way to get into the property besides...
No, I didn't mean cutting that entrance off.
You mean just adding more vegetation over here?
Well, I guess they're calling it vegetation. I was just...
Yeah, that photo there.
They're calling that.
This is not included in this area right here. That's the opening. That shows it's not vegetated. I don't think so. I mean, they're well...
I mean, they're leaving that anyway, which is good. They're leaving that the way we see it now.
If you needed to get a truck into the property.
Yeah, no, I understand that part. That's okay. You can continue. Thank you.
Unless you have any other questions for me. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's a reasonable request to allow it to remain. It would be a great hardship to reduce that roof by 20 square feet for no real gain that I can understand.
Thank you. I think, board members, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll hear from the planning department next on this, and then we can hear if anyone is from the public, and the public would like to speak next after. Michael, good evening, Michael.
Good evening, board members. Mike DeLolio, planning department. I just would like to point out that on the, although the building department didn't call them and let them know that there was an issue with it, they did write the BP in a way, approximately 200-square-foot pool house with attached open roof shower. So they did denote it there to a degree. What was submitted is in fact what is, what is what we're looking at here. So it's likely that it was just an oversight, that it never came into question until they went for their CO. In terms of...the only other thing that we had brought up in our assessment is they've got an area over the, where the sanitary is, about over here, that they've got labeled as vegetated, and we were just looking for an updated survey come CO time. And if they were over-cleared, then they wouldn't, would revegetate. But those were our only major concerns.
How big an area do you think?
I don't know offhand. I wouldn't really be able to tell without a, you know, comparing the survey.
Actually, it's, yeah, it's quite, actually, if you go back to your...
They have it marked edge of lawn.
Yeah, I see that. It's interesting. Roy, if you go back to your site photo, it's all lawn.
Looking back at the house?
Looking, yeah, yeah.
They've got it marked on the survey.
Yeah, that's all vegetation.
There's vegetation.
And they say the edge of, the lawn comes, just a little bit comes off the...
It comes out here.
It's almost like that they have that, yeah. That's, so there's a lot of, yeah, it's going to look sort of the way it is right now. So, yeah. I mean, on that aerial, that's, yeah.
Looks like updated survey.
Yeah.
Come time.
That's right. Any questions for my board members?
Wait, okay, on that, we need an updated survey to what? Show the additional clearing?
Yeah, so that it matches what's on site.
I think to show actual clearing.
To though the actual clearing.
Which is actually there.
Right.
Because these, it's likely that the survey that we're looking at was the one submitted with the building permit.
Right.
So it's likely that it happened before any of this other clearing occurred. So it may have been true at that time, but it doesn't look to be that way now.
Okay.
What's the parcel to the left? I'm sorry.
Here?
Yeah.
That's another lot that gets its access through that common driveway easement.
But it's undeveloped?
It's currently vacant, yeah.
You know, it is interesting. You wouldn't think so, but it...
It was surprising walking up to that to see that, you know.
I missed that.
No, that property there.
Yeah.
But it is interesting on the survey here that existing total clearing is 35-279, and you're allowed 37-326. So they're getting kind of, they're getting kind of close.
Potentially.
Yeah.
I was under the impression that it was...
You can't, you can't speak from there, as you probably know, but...
Because that's pretty close.
But that's okay. Yeah, so...
We can update that. I was under the, it said the date is current on this survey, so I was under the impression that the clearing was. But he's right, the, it was just updated in February just to include the roof calculation. So clearing needs to be updated.
Okay.
But we'll make it conform if there's more, if there's vegetation, revegetation that needs to take place, we'll...
Take care of it. Right, okay, okay. Thank you. Anything else, Michael, on your...
No, sir.
Yeah, thanks for the report, the TAM and all. Any questions, board members? Terry?
No.
Okay. You guys good?
Yep.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Roy, if you...
Yeah, nobody's...
Oh, yeah, in the public. Is there anyone here to speak on this? No? Okay. No one? Okay.
Before Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and the record for the applicant Nicholas Warswick at 1 Clinton Street in Springs, Suffolk Tax Map number 300-78-07-1.
Second?
Concur.
And I concur. Okay, thanks, Roy. Okay, thank you, Susan.
I won't get up.
Let's see, how are we doing on time? We're probably fine. It's around 6:30.
6:50.
Oh, we need, we have two minutes. Okay, we have just two minutes before our second public hearing begins. Did you all get a chance to check out the minutes? We could do the, you all get a chance to look at the minutes? No? No, you want to hold off on that then? Okay.
You didn't.
Okay.
They was having a problem getting on them.
They were emailed.
They were emailed, and I don't think I was able to...
I did not get a chance.
Oh, really? Yeah, okay. So Denise, we'll take care of the minutes next week.
Yeah, but we'll have two sets.
We'll have two sets next week on the attenuate.
I don't know.
Get the package.
Change your routine.
Anyone need a survey? Need a survey? Anything you can, surveys and all. We have a lot. These plans, there's a set of these. And there's some plans here in the file. Board members, you have that good? Okay. I think we're probably pretty good then, huh? 49. Okay. Okay, our 6:50 PM public hearing is, the applicant is Michael Humphries. The lot size and location is 1160, 100 DeForest Unit 22, map number 80, Montauk Shores condominium, Unit 22, Montauk, tax map number 300-32.1-1-262. And the description here is to allow an approximately 200, oh, pardon me, pardon me, to construct, pardon me, I'll start over. Description is to construct a 67.25-square-foot shed, 12-square-foot outdoor shower, and reconstruct deck stairs on a parcel of land with coastal wetlands and bluffs. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the East Hampton Town Code, and one variance are required for this project. One variance of 36.6 feet from 255-4-30 wetland setbacks to allow a shed to remain 63.4 feet where 100 feet is required and any other relief necessary. This is in an RS resort zoning district. The flood zone is AE16, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
We do have the affidavit of service and posting. Appears that notice was proper.
Thank you. And this is in Board Member Berger's Montauk District. Terry, if you would please...
Okay, this is the official notice in front of the unit. This is properly posted. This is a shot from the side. This is what's existing there now, the shed and the steps and decking in the back that was added. I'm going to go around the unit, and eventually we'll have some shots from the back. Go next. First, I'm going to look up the street to the east and see the rest of the edge water. And then we're going to look to the west next and see the units are pretty much uniform. Next. Now I'm in the back. Go next, just to give you a sense of the scenery and the fencing and the bluff area. Next. Now, this is looking down the west side from the back deck that was added to the existing deck. And you can see the AC unit on the deck there, the little ramp. And then there was something about height I saw in the TAM, so I took a shot of the roof line there. And that might be the last one. It's the last one. It's a little bit closer shot of the shed as it is today and the steps.
Right, and the steps, yeah. Okay, thanks, Terry. Any questions, board members?
I just have a point of question, point of classification, I guess. In the trailer park, I believe there's a building permit moratorium due to, until they, until they upgrade the septic system. I think they're, I think they're working on that or something. Does that apply in this case, too?
Yeah, we discussed this at our meeting this afternoon. And Michael, do you want to go ahead? Maybe Michael could comment on it, if you would, Michael.
Hi. I just got a clarification from Ann Glenna this morning on that. That is, as it relates to any new structures or renovations of existing, not any accessory structures or to raise your house to meet FEMA, is how she's doing. So they are still issuing on accessories, is what she told me this morning.
But anything that has to do with a sanitary cannot get a building permit?
Correct. Yeah, until they, until they upgrade, I believe.
So as long as it doesn't increase the...
My understanding is that.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
So they do decks and sheds and...
Yeah, because, Michael, they had the survey, the survey, they had a permit to do that back deck, right? And that was since that was...
Correct, from 2014.
Also, yeah.
Yeah. I had the same question, Roy, this afternoon. Okay, thank you. Any, thanks, Terry, for that report. Any questions for Terry?
No.
No? Okay. Are you the applicant or the agent?
I'm the agent. I'm the architect. I'm Paige Goolrick. I'm here on behalf of my client.
Sorry, could you start over? Because they have to get your name and spelling and all. Thank you.
Okay, it's Paige. The first name is P-A-G-E. The last name is Goolrick, G-O-O-L-R-I-C-K. Paige Goolrick Architects. And I'm here on the behalf of Mike Humphries, who owns Unit 22.
Thank you. And where are you from? We asked for the address where you're...
32 Old Slip, which is near Wall Street, downtown Manhattan.
Okay. Does that work, Denise? You good? Thank you.
Old Slip?
Old Slip.
Okay, thank you.
It was a slip at one time. It's a little piece of tar now.
Now it's landfill.
It's where the landmarks department was for many years.
It's old.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Thank you, Paige. Thank you.
So there's really a very simple reason why we would like to do this. And I don't know where it's best to stand here, but I have a before and after photo, and...
Maybe you could come up by the microphone, sort of like what you're doing was good. Just so that you can get, that's fine.
Okay. In your way there, if I do that? So I have a before and after photo and also the survey, which I colored. And I have three colors here. The yellow is the existing shed and access footprint there. It's a little ramp. So the existing shed occupies this
area, and there's also...
You know, you're going to have to speak, they're trying to...
There's one here.
To the microphone a little bit.
There's one right there.
Oh, there is one. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I didn't know there was. Good. Okay. Otherwise, LTV would get upset.
So the green is the common area overlapped by both old and new. The blue shows the new area, which is far exceeded by the yellow. So we're actually reducing the size of the shed by just under one square foot. And we are reducing...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we just received a word from the LTV director that you have to speak into the microphone. It's not picking up.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
This one doesn't work?
It's not picking up.
I can peek into this one. That's what we need you to do.
Okay.
Maybe in the future we can get a mic there, but thank you.
Sure, sure.
So maybe you could just sum that up again.
Yes, the rationale behind this is that when you approach the property now, you can't see the access to the building. This building, oddly enough, has two stoops. One separate little stoop, which opens into a very strange location right next to the master bedroom. And what we'd like to do is pull up and see how you get in the house. So if the kids jump out of the car and they run up to the door, you can see where they are. So basically, what we're doing is keeping the exact same height, decreasing the footprint slightly, and just making it shallower and a bit longer in length. And that's...
How do you get in now with that wooden staircase is going?
What you do is there, now there is one little stair, sort of stoop, if you will, just in front. And then there's a second, the deck is sort of hidden right now by the shed because of the depth of the shed.
Right.
So right now, the shed is, we want to reduce it to five feet in depth, and it's about eight feet deep right now. So we're really just compressing it and lengthening it a little bit, but keeping exactly the same height. And that makes it so that you can see the steps and come up onto the deck, which doesn't change in width. The steps are sort of cut out of the existing deck.
Is the shower in the photo, the after photo?
The shower is within, I don't have an, I have an after photo on the sides. I haven't shown here as we have in the detailed drawings here.
Where's the shower?
There's none now.
We have a, two openings in the roof. One is above the outdoor shower. And you would see that, you'd see one above the compressor here, and there's one opening above the outdoor shower here, which both sit within the footprint of the shed so that it sort of consolidates things. The 12-foot, square-foot shower, three foot by four foot, which is the allowable, and the 67 square feet together make up the new footprint, which is .75 square feet less than what's there now.
The compressor doesn't have to move?
No, the compressor is in the same location as it is now.
Isn't that right by the door, though?
It is right by the door.
All right.
You may not know the answer to this because it's not an architectural question, but is the, it says that it's a condominium?
It is a condominium. It's a sort of a strange thing, but I believe all the units are part of the larger Montauk Shore condominium.
Okay, so the, so they, your clients own the trailer, the manufactured home, and they also own a share of a condominium company that gives them the right to put it...
That's my understanding of it. And I believe they own, or in a condo way of owning, the land beneath it. There are two different ways to have trailers there. One is you don't own the land.
Right, the trailer park owns the land. And you rent the space and you own the trailer.
Yes, and they purchased the land beneath it.
From the condos.
Yes. Oddly enough, goes under the adjacent trailer.
I know we've concentrated mostly on the proposed shed at this point, but can we concentrate a little bit on the proposed deck? You're proposing the deck within a SEHA?
The deck, the deck is not part of the proposal...
Oh, why, the survey says proposed deck.
That was a previous variance that was completed.
Yeah, to Roy's point, there were two surveys, one dated December. Yeah, to Roy's point, there were two surveys, one dated December, that does not show the current proposal.
She has a copy.
I've got a March 10th. Is that the most recent?
Well, I have two surveys. I have one dated April 19.
I might have a later survey, too, so let's take a look at it.
I have revised...
We actually updated the survey seven times.
Oh, there's December 7th, 5th, 2017.
Right, but that doesn't, that one shows the deck that was added in the back that Roy was talking about.
Oh, I see.
But it doesn't have the proposed things on it, so...
Oh, so that might be helpful, Roy. That's right.
Okay, so that deck is existing, and it's approved?
And it had a permit.
Yes, that was approved.
I have two surveys.
That was from 2010?
I have two surveys too.
We do, we do as well.
You have more than two?
No, we have two.
It's two.
On December 5th.
That is January 10th, and then it's updated, no, wait a minute, December 5th, April 19th?
December 5th is the latest survey date, but it doesn't show the proposed...
Yeah, I just showed her that.
Yeah, so what we need is one new survey that...
No, no, that's December, no, that's December 5th, 2017. We have a March 10th, 2018.
She doesn't have that.
Oh, I don't have a March 10th.
Yeah, let me show you that. That's what I was saying, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is there a CVO on that deck?
I don't have a 2018.
No, we are going for the CVO when the shed is complete. We were advised to do both, and then advised, go for a new CVO when that's done.
Where do you see a March 10th?
The building department has signed off on it.
March 10th.
But we, they have visited the site, but we still have kept the permit open, because we'd like to complete the CVO with both the shed and the...
So the previous, have you updated the previous?
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, that's April, yeah, that's way back when.
Have you updated the previous NRSP in terms of time, too? Is that deck required an NRSP up?
It was in the existing variance, so I don't want to misspeak about that.
Okay, I'm unclear as to what survey we should be looking at.
John, do you have additional surveys that you're handing out?
Yeah, I do. I have, I have a December 5th, 2017, but I'm looking for...
I have that, too.
But I'm looking, I had a March...
As well as the...
I don't have a 2018. Which is looking at the most recent one.
I thought I had a March 18th.
Right here.
Yeah, we're looking at it.
And then I've got a March 10th, 2018. I'm going to look for other copies of that.
Yeah, I don't have, I only have, the last I have is December 5th, 2017.
March 10th, 2018 was submitted.
And that's the most recent, I take it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Let me keep looking, but is that another copy?
No, no, this is the one you just gave me and Terry, and I will look.
Yeah, it's this one.
Let me hand that, hand that to Beth, if you would, just so she can see it. I'm going to find some more in here.
I have another copy, but I...
So the March, the March 10th also says proposed deck.
Yeah.
No, these are, how did I get that?
And we have kept the permit open on the deck. The building department went out and reviewed the deck, but we were told to just update the CVO one time.
That's why.
But we did renew the building permit, yes.
Let's see which one this is here.
But just to be clear, there was a previous NRSP on that. I mean, Michael, I'm sure, he's not in his head, so I think that'll go away. You know, we'll clear that up when he gets up.
Yeah, it's strange that this is the only one in the file that we have.
I submitted, you have it.
Okay, I've got many of April 19th, and I have many of December 5th.
I have Michael's copy right here, which is one of the ones that was submitted of March.
Okay, well, we'll keep that with Michael. I'll leave this one right in the file, though. Okay.
We shared it, we have it.
Okay, we're okay then.
I'm sorry, we were asked to update our survey seven times.
Yeah.
With different people who were in the planning department, who advised us, and we brought it back in, and then they asked for something else. So I've been down the hall to Walbridge quite a few times.
Right. Okay, I'll keep it around the top. Okay, are there any questions, board members, for Paige?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we'll hear from the planning department next.
So you don't have any extra surveys?
No, I don't, not of that one.
You can, you can have this one back, I don't...
So Terry, you should probably keep one, since it's your, it's your, and there's one...
Do you have one for the file?
Oh, we have one for the file, and then that's...
You hold on to that.
Hold on to that with your, with your life.
No, that's quite easy. It's driving the case.
Yes.
Now you're up to do it.
Okay. Okay, good evening again, Michael.
Good evening, board members. Yes, the, this deck, labeled proposed deck, has a previous approval from 2014, and just as they said, they're waiting to complete the shed and to do everything all at once and get their CO at once. So that's why, so in my understanding, that Walbridge will leave things as proposed if the work has not been COed. It's only then that they will change the label on their surveys.
Oh, I see.
That should, should answer that a little bit.
Right.
Second, that, I mean, this is one of the few projects in Mocho that has the potential to actually decrease the coverage, which is a concern over there. I think, I looked at the numbers today, they are, in terms of their building coverage, they are, they're further away than they are with their total coverage, I believe.
It's also increasing the setback.
What's that?
It's also increasing the setback, is it not?
Yeah, from the existing?
Yeah.
Because you, yeah. And it's more consolidated, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Great.
Any questions for Michael? Board members?
No.
Terry, you good? Thanks, Michael. Is there any in the public who would like to speak on this application? No? Okay, Terry?
On the matter of Michael Humphries, 100 DeForest, Unit 22, 22 Edgewater, tax map 300-32.1-01-262, make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Second? Concur. Concur.
And I concur. Thanks, Terry. Okay, thank you for coming out. More minutes.
I'm wondering, Mike, I thought so.
I'm just wondering, is the application by the owner of the trailer of the unit?
Was it the last one? Yeah, I didn't know the...
They are...
I think it's on my...
Yeah, with the owner of the units, they don't own the condo association.
I didn't know.
I know it's an...
I don't know the town views it as one, but...
Yeah, not at all. Typically, they're manufactured.
Okay, we have, we have about three minutes before our next public hearing commences.
Typically, they're not on the condominium form. It's a different thing.
Want to sign that extension of time?
Sure.
Sure. We have time for an extension of time?
We do.
We don't need any, that's from the Department of Redundancy Department.
Right. Okay, well, we'll jump to an extension of time here. I believe it's the only one Denise, we have this evening, correct?
Yeah, the only one.
Yep, and this is in Montauk, in the matter of Charlotte Grinnell, so I'll pass this on to Board Member Berger. Terry, if you would, please.
Yeah, this was one that we, we actually spoke about last week and discussed, as you remember. It goes back to an original NRSP from June of 2004, and we decided that we would add an additional condition of approval. This applicant is looking to sell the home, and so we added a condition of approval to, for any work that would be done on this determination in the future, that the new building permit and the applicant would demonstrate that they will have a sanitary system that complies with the current standards today, the current code today. So seeing that we did that, I make a motion for this extension of time for Charlotte Grinnell, 525 West Lake Drive in Montauk, tax map 300-6-1-16, to approve the extension of time.
Second? Concur. Concur.
And I concur. Thanks, Terry. I just had one here, what did I just draw? Oh, here it is, I got it, I got it, thanks.
We're good, Mrs. Grinnell.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and it is 7:10, we can start our third public hearing this evening. Okay, the applicant is Susan Porter, lot size and location 33,303 square feet, at 191 South Fairview Avenue, Montauk Beach Development Corp., East Fort Pond Residential Section, subdivision number three, lots three and four, block 40, map number 1013, Montauk, tax map number 300-28-5-24. Description, to remove an existing hot tub and construct a new 136 square foot swimming pool within jurisdiction and setbacks of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought, one variance and a natural resources special permit pursuant to 255-4-20 of the East Hampton Town Code are required for this application. One variance of 23 feet from 255-4-30 of the Town Code is required to construct the swimming pool 77 feet from freshwater wetlands where a 100-foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. This is in a B residence zone, and the flood zone is X, and the secret class is type 2. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
The affidavit?
Yeah.
You have the affidavit, service and posting. Appears that notice was proper.
Thank you. Okay, this is in Board Member Berger's Montauk District. Terry, if you would, please.
Okay, so this is a shot, I'm standing across the street from the applicant's house, that's my car in the driveway. It was properly posted. We had a lot of winds, I think four times this week, I put that posting back up.
Look at that tree bend.
Next.
It was so windy.
What?
It was so windy in Montauk recently.
And the other tree blew over.
Hey, this is a shot just looking down South Fairview Avenue to the east. The wetlands are on the right edge there, but the applicant also, lot four next to this, and all that other uncleared area is also the applicant's property. That's a closer shot of the posting. Now, it's a shot from where the posting is, basically looking across the South Fairview Avenue at the neighborhood. Okay, now I'm walking, I walked up the driveway on the west side, and there's a gate and some stairs leading up to decking, as well as a gate that some of that shrubbery on the right is covering. So I'm going to go up there. And it's the deck going from the north side to the south side, and on the far end is where the hot tub is, and you'll see that next. This is the existing hot tub today, tucked in the corner. Next, that's just a shot from behind the hot tub, I was trying to get like where the property line, you could see there's some fencing out there, wire fencing and all vegetation. This shot is actually a shot toward the wetlands that are in jurisdiction. Obviously, you can't see them, but, so next, that's a shot across the back of the house there, and there's an outdoor shower, and then the decking kind of ends, there's no steps off there. Next, now I'm back, back out the front, where the driveway is, and shooting at the wetlands, that area where that tree is, basically, that is, looks like it got hit by lightning or something. That's the area of the wetlands, and next, just a shot. I went up and I stood on the steps at the front entrance to the house, which is on that side where the wetlands are, and just took a shot out over, so you could see the vegetation and the rest of the wetlands, and beyond the wetlands on this property. Oh, this was a shot back down on South Fairview, away from the house, again, because of the property, the lot four that's next to the applicant's property is also hers, and that's a shot of basically what that looks like now. It's all untouched, and that should be it.
So the property, is it, is it two lots?
Well, this says lot four on the survey.
And, and the houses, and lot four is undeveloped, and lot three?
It's one lot.
It's one lot?
It's all one lot.
Because the survey shows a lot three and a lot four, it looks like.
Right, but it's one lot.
Right, okay. So the wetlands is all within their property?
Yeah.
Okay, the applicant's property, I should say.
Any other questions, board members?
Nope.
Okay, thanks Terry for that.
Thank you.
Okay, Joel, are you there? Good evening, Joel.
Good evening, board. Joel Halsey, on behalf of the property owner. Here, it's, it's pretty cut and dry. This is actually one property, it does say lots three and four, but a lot of the lots in Montauk, you know, in East Hampton in general, either if they were pre-existing non-conforming to lot area may have merged.
Right.
Because of, you know, ownership, or they, they may have just always been one lot that has never been divided into two. There is, if you do look at the survey, you will see a dashed line down it.
Yeah.
You'll never be able to divide this lot into two lots. Just for one thing, the wetland right there encompasses what would be lot four, or, yeah, lot four. So, so, any of the board members' minds at rest, this is definitely one lot.
Thank you.
There is, however, a conforming location within this area to build a pool. We choose not to, for many reasons, obviously, there'd be, you know, it's an older couple who live here, and it would be a long walk to get from the house all the way to the pool. For one, there'd be some substantial clearing associated with it, and it'd just be nicer to have a smaller pool in your, your back deck there.
Wouldn't there be a larger impact on the clearing, if you were to do that?
There would be, yes, there would be.
Yeah.
So the pool itself in general, it's a small pool, it's eight by 17, 136 square feet, 156 square feet. So, you know, it's, it's not much, it's going into the place of the existing hot tub, which is being removed, 136 square feet. Now, there is no, if you read the analysis memo, which I'm sure you all have, there is no pool profile that depicts two-foot separation of groundwater. You know, I'd spoken to the planning department about it, and I kind of felt that it was a little bit of an overkill, to have somebody come in here and dig a test hole down, I'd say at least 20 feet to hit groundwater. For one, if you look, you know, you know, this is, in this area where the hot tub is, you'll see that the deck is out of grade, and you can look on the survey, shows an elevation of the deck, well, first, shows the elevation of the wetlands, 68 feet, roughly, right around there. The elevation of the land, the ground within the area where the pool is going to be is 77 feet. The elevation of the deck is 79 feet, and if you were to look under the deck, you'd see the deck is pretty much all cleared out. There's nothing, so it drops off from here, under the deck, you could almost stand up under the deck. So from, from, when the house was built, they excavated it, they built the deck on it, and they never backfilled all the way, so there's, there's a foundation sticking out of grade under that deck. So essentially, the pool is going to be, at most, you're going to dig two feet into So essentially, the pool is gonna be, at most, you're gonna dig two feet into the ground in this, in the, just, you know, to the north, sorry, the southwest of the, the existing deck. So, you know, I mean, if you're gonna hit groundwater, digging two feet into the ground there, there's gonna be, there's a lot more trouble to this house than, than, you know, anything else I could imagine. So, you know, in, in sense, you know, I just wanted to explain why, you know, you know, we didn't feel the need for, you know, a, a pool profile to depict a two-foot separation to groundwater on here. Like I said, ground, you're not gonna hit groundwater until you get at least as close to, you know, as deep as that wetland is, and that, you know, that's sixty feet, sixty-eight feet. And the, that's, you know, nine feet, you know, you go nine feet, and that's where the ground is here. We're not, we're not proposing a seven-foot-deep pool. This is gonna be four-foot-deep, six-foot-deep, you know.
Yeah. So you're, with regard to your clearing, just to move to that for a second?
Sure.
It looks like you, existing is four thousand forty, and you're proposing four thousand one thirty. So that's only a, what's that, a ninety, ninety, that's a ninety-square-foot increase in coverage, right? Total lot coverage?
Oh, in coverage, yes.
Total lot coverage, yeah, right. And then I just want to see what you're doing. I mean, it doesn't look like it's much of an impact on the clearing as well. I just wanna see the numbers there.
There is no, there is no change.
Yeah, yeah.
Was this an elevation?
Essentially, they just, you know, the, the hot tub's a hot tub, but they just want someplace, they want a plunge pool, essentially.
I think the location certainly makes better sense than the conforming in this lot, you know?
Yeah, in this case.
Yes. As you can see, there are, there are, well, there's a pool right there in the neighborhood, much larger than we're planning on. Actually, this, this is, this is two lots here. There's a house and a pool in a separate lot, but that's allowed in the town. And actually, I think that was done way before.
I have to say, I have to say I commend the applicants for proposing to build this, like, over an existing hot tub. They're not changing these coverages, and, you know, they're certainly not being greedy. They're looking for a eight-foot by seventeen-foot pool, so I, I have to commend them for their sensitivity to the lot, really.
Thank you. Okay, help, I might've helped a little there. I can't remember, though. It's been a while.
Good guy.
Actually, they actually had a ZBA hearing for this.
Yeah, years ago.
Years ago.
And they withdrew it or something?
They withdrew it. So I decided to do a whole, it wasn't, I wasn't part of the application at that point. And I saw, I was like, oh, if you guys hadn't withdrawn it, and you just, you might not even need a whole new application.
Yeah, yeah. Tyler, I believe, did the research on that, I think, right? Tyler, yeah, came across that as well. Okay, any questions for Joel, board members? Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll hear from the planning department now. Good evening, Tyler.
Good evening. Tyler Borzak for the planning department. I don't have much else to say. Pretty much everything was covered. I'll just review it very briefly. So they're removing an pre-existing hot tub and replacing it with a fairly small swimming pool. Again, as was already mentioned, there is either a much more conforming or a completely conforming location on the eastern side of the parcel. But because the existing, existing improvements are all on that southwestern side, even though a variance would be required, and we would normally be somewhat wary about a variance for a swimming pool, it does seem to be a much more logical location, not requiring more clearing and, and leaving that eastern portion intact as it is, which is valuable habitat and a nice buffer to the, to the wetlands.
Yeah.
Which, which provide important functions for floodwaters and road runoff, as you would expect with this type of wetland.
Yeah.
It also provides a very nice habitat for deer. I live in this neighborhood, and they're all over there, walking around in those areas that are not improved.
Yeah, it's probably fifteen thousand square feet roughly have uncleared on this property, maybe, maybe almost upwards of twenty.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's a significant area of vegetation there.
What happens to the existing conforming area, once, assuming this pool would've gone in? Does that get stricken somehow, or?
You mean where the?
I mean, like, somewhere down the road. Could somebody say, you know what, I don't like this pool over here. I think I'm gonna go put it in the middle of the wetlands. Can they, can they do that, once this pool would've go in?
They would require a new variance.
So, so that existing, they'd have to go through the whole application process?
Right, it'd be new construction.
Yeah, very good.
Okay. Yeah, and you've mentioned how coverage was only increasing nominally. That was really about the, the crux of the application.
Thank you, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler, board members?
No.
Thanks for your work on this, Tyler. Is there anyone in the public like to speak on this? No? Okay, Terry, when you get a chance?
Okay, so in the matter of Susan Porter, one ninety-one South Fairview Avenue, Montauk, tax map three hundred dash zero-two-eight dash zero-five dash twenty-four, make a motion to close the public hearing and the public record.
Second.
Concur.
Concur.
And I concur. Thanks, Terry. Joel, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know this would be unusual, given our normal state of affairs, but I'm wondering if the board might be able, we have a couple of minutes here?
Take a break.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering if we might be able to render a decision on this application immediately.
I was thinking, I was actually thinking the same thing, and I'm, so I'm glad you brought that up. Tim? Terry, it's your district. How do you feel on?
Yeah, fine with me.
Doing that? Okay, great. Well, I guess counsel, I should read it back into the record. Is that correct, counsel?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You wanna just look at mine?
Okay, well, Tim, thank you for suggesting that, and Terry for, and board members, so let's, I'll read this into the record again. So the applicant here is, oh, you know what, I want my public notice. Who has the public notice? Does someone have it?
Right here, John. Right here.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, pardon me. So the applicant here is Susan Porter, and the lot size and location is thirty-three thousand three hundred and three square feet at one ninety-one, pardon me, one ninety-one South Fairview Avenue, Montauk Beach Development Core East Fort Pond Residential Section, subdivision number three, lots three and four, block forty, map number ten thirteen, Montauk, tax map number three hundred dash twenty-eight dash five dash twenty-four. Description: To remove an existing hot tub and construct a new one hundred and thirty-six square foot swimming pool within jurisdiction and setbacks of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought is one variance and a natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five dash four dash twenty of the East Hampton Town Code are required for this application. One variance of twenty-three feet from two fifty-five dash four dash thirty of the Town Code is required to construct the swimming pool seventy-seven feet from freshwater wetlands where a one-hundred-foot setback is required and any other relief necessary. This is in a B residence zone. The flood zone is X, and the secret class is type two. And Terry, would you start us off on this, please?
Sure. Well, we just heard all the testimony. I think this one, as far as the variance, I think in this case, the variance, well, it's, it's not substantial in this case, and it's basically a swimming pool replacing a hot tub. There's gonna be very little clearing, if any, that needs to be done for the pool, slightly, slight area. It's only increasing the, the property, the GFA, by, by about ninety feet. And I think this, this is a very unique case in that there is a conforming location, but I, looking at this and knowing the neighborhood and the wildlife and the wetlands in this area, the, to build the pool in the conforming location, I think would do more harm than constructing the pool with the variance on the back of the deck and the back of the property, as proposed. I think it meets the criteria. It's not, it's not an overly substantial variance. The benefit to the applicant far exceeds any detriment to the town. As I stated, putting it in the conforming location, I think would do more detriment to the town. It's, it'll protect the natural resources, and in no way, no way will it be bad that I can think of in any manner. And I think it meets the standards for the natural resources special permit even more so because of the, the unimproved area that's around the wetlands, that, that will not be disturbed at all and can, can remain vegetated, as we saw in the pictures. So I am looking to approve this project, as proposed.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Let's see, maybe since Tim brought up this, would you like to go next? Tim, give it a shot?
I'll make it short and sweet. I agree completely with Board Member Berger, and I would vote to approve this for all the reasons she just articulated.
Thank you, Tim. Sam?
Yeah, it's not a substantial variance, and it's, and I think preserving that wetlands area is really a notable accomplishment from this application. So, I'm on board.
Great. Roy?
I'll make it shorter yet. Ibid. I agree, I agree.
Right, perfect. Thank you, board members. I agree with my fellow board members, and as I just said, it's commendable that they, when someone comes in with an application that's so reasonable and thoughtful, it's, it's a pleasure to give them a quick decision on it. So I too am, am looking forward to approving this application.
Particularly if the public hearing doesn't consume its entire allotted length.
Okay, we good, Beth, on that?
Don't pat Joel's back too much.
Yeah, right, exactly.
We're gonna lose anything. Yeah, get going.
We good on that, Beth?
Mm-hmm.
Great, okay. Thanks, Terry. Thank you, Tim, for suggesting that.
Rocket, docket.
Right.
Yeah. Well, that one has benefits. That one has benefits, that's one.
Seven thirty on the dot. Okay, we're right on time to start our fourth public hearing this evening. The applicant here is one seventy-five Atlantic Avenue LLC. Lot size and location, twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet at one seventy-five Atlantic Avenue Amagansett, tax map number three hundred dash one seventy-eight dash two dash three. Description is to demolish the existing residence and accessory structures, and to construct a new three thousand seven hundred and ninety square foot residence with a three hundred and seventy-five square foot accessory structure, a four hundred and fifty square foot swimming pool, one thousand three hundred and ten square foot pool patio, new sanitary system with retaining wall, one thousand seven hundred and eighty square foot of driveway, one thousand six hundred and twenty square feet of first and second story decking, and seven hundred and eighty square feet of walkways on a parcel of land containing dune land and dune vegetation. The relief sought here is a natural resources special permit pursuant to two fifty-five dash four dash twenty of the East Hampton Town Code and any other relief necessary. The zoning district here is an A residence, AE flood zone, elevation ten, and the secret class is type two. And counsel, do we have a proper affidavit of service and posting?
We do have the affidavit, service and posting. Appears that notice was proper.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and this, board members, is in my Amagansett district. So I have a field report for this application. Okay, I'll pull up my survey as well. Let's see, I have in front of me, board members, a revised date. It's received April fifth with our stamp. Looks like three twenty-one, two thou, no, pardon me, three fourteen?
Yes.
Two thousand eighteen, ad site plan?
I have one that's later.
Oh, you do? Okay, maybe I do.
I have a three twenty-one seventeen.
Oh, really?
No, twenty seventeen.
I have nine twenty-eight eighteen.
Oh, you do? Okay.
That's new.
Oh, wait, I, I have a nine twenty-eight also.
Oh, I see, we have a, the east and the, we have their, you know, their.
Stamped in October twelve.
Oh, here it is. It was, yeah.
On October twelfth also?
No, stamped in by the town on October.
Now, I have.
I have.
It's in the cover letter from Adam O'Grave.
Now, I have.
I have a nine twenty-eight.
Yeah, okay. And I also have landscape, plans from East End Landscaping that are dated October eighteenth. Board members here, I have some copies of that.
Uh, no, I have that.
You have that?
Just need the survey.
And, uh, let me see what surveys we have here. Okay. Let me see what your survey looks like, the most recent you have.
Received October twelfth.
Nine twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen. After this was September twenty-fifth, yeah. I have nine twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen. Is that the one we're looking for?
Yeah, that's the newest survey.
Okay, and board members, I have extra copies. Does someone need a copy of that as well? No, that's three twenty-one. They're all mixed up, jeez. Do I, and there's also these, this copy here.
It looks like there's a grading plan.
Do you have this, board members here?
Yeah, Josh.
Roy?
What's that? Oh, I have that.
Okay. Okay, so we're looking for a three twenty, pardon me, a nine twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen. Okay, does everyone have that? Terry, you have yours? Okay, I'll start the, can you share that one?
Yeah, right, yeah, three twenty-eight eighteen.
You share that for now.
All right, nine twenty-eight eighteen, and it's there.
Okay, I'll start my field report.
Go.
So, board members, this is standing up, you can see it's posted properly. And I'm standing out in front of the driveway here, so I'm looking pretty much, almost directly east. Actually, I'm looking a little south. You see, that's the entrance to the southeast. That is the entrance to the town, the parking lot, and that's the little, you know, stand there where they check your stickers and all. And the dunes with the Atlantic behind there. And then I turned, you can see further to the right, looking directly down at the ocean, and the little hut on the right. And then I turned back directly down the driveway, and you see the residence. You see the residence there, and that existing on the left, you see where it says existing on the survey, existing cottage to be removed. You see the little, left side of the picture there, of the photo? Now I turn.
Wait, on the extreme left of the photo?
Yeah, on the extreme, if you would, yeah, see on the very left of the photo?
The peak through.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be on the survey, it says existing cottage to be removed. And, and straight ahead, you see the gable end, bless you, the gable end, Terry, is the, the residence that's existing, that's to be removed. Exactly, exactly. And, yeah, and now I turn ninety degrees to the left, and I'm looking up Atlantic Avenue. Give you a sense of even the vegetation that remains there, and then, now I've turned, I've walked in the driveway here, and just giving you a shot of the gable end of that existing residence. And you can just see the dense, how dense the vegetation is on this whole lot, it seems. And I've walked in, and I, I'm looking at the gable end of that, of that shed or structure, cottage to be removed. Now, I've walked right up to the house. The vegetation's so dense, which is wonderful, but you can't, you know, you can't get, pull back and get vistas because it's so tight. So this is pretty much looking along the face of the house that faces the parking lot and, and, and faces south and a little bit east. It faces the parking lot and the ocean side.
Parking lot's on the other side of that fence?
The parking lot would be to the right side of that fence, exactly. I'm basically going around the house kind of counterclockwise here. Oh, I thought I took another one. I guess I didn't take one in the back of the house. Well, now I've walked all the way around the house to the, of the existing house, to what would be kind of the north and a little bit west side. And the reason I took this picture, I'm, I'm looking back, you can barely see the existing house to be removed, but if you can, you see that it steps back, and I'm showing you the step backs there along the north side of the existing house and how thick that existing vegetation is there. You can't even walk through there. I was gonna, again, this is another shot, going back out behind the house to the fence, looking east again. That's the fence on the right-hand side of the photo. And again, just to give you a sense of the density of the vegetation along there. Now I've gone back out, and now I'm looking down the parking lot, looking east at the existing residence there. And then you see the, the bathroom, cabana, whatever it is, the town structure there. And now I've, from that spot, I'm looking back up because I wanted to make sure it's clear. This special little piece of our town property, the Amagansett lifeguard station, is right there across the street and up the road a little bit. So we all know the context of that. Now I've gone back, now I'm standing out in the parking lot, kind of with my back to the dunes, looking back at the existing, kind of looking north at the existing residence and the fence. And the bigger parking lot opens up to the right of that photo, and now I've, yeah, to the right is where the parking lot wraps back around, you know? And now I walk over there, and I'm looking back in the sun at the other gable end, at the, of the existing house. And again, to show you the density of this, this vegetation, it's pretty much everywhere like that. And now I've just panned to the right a little bit, kind of looking up north to this, this dogleg in the, in the parking lot there. And along, that would be the property line on the left side of the photo. And then just to give you a kind of a character of the neighborhood, I spun around, and we're looking down to that southeast corner, you know, of the parking lot. I'm looking down the dune and kind of filling this with those nice little structures down there. I'm looking down the dune and kind of filling this with those nice little structures down there. I think that's it. Okay, any questions, board members?
I have a question slash, a comment slash question. Looking at the survey, we don't have any, it doesn't appear we have any existing clearing calculations. In your report, you mentioned this often.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. It doesn't look--
So I don't think we have a basis point for--
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
For establishing how much clearing is, additional clearing is happening on--
Well, maybe, maybe--
So, um, there's no, and I think that's gonna be--
Sean?
Yeah, Tyler, I completely agree. Tyler might be able to help us on that. Go ahead. Do you see it there?
No, it says, it says proposed.
Lot area and maximum-- It just says proposed.
Versus allowable.
Yeah, so for the record, there--
There's no existing clearing.
Yeah, for the record, to Roy's point, the lot area is twenty-three fifty, pardon me, twenty-three three, twenty-three thousand five hundred is the lot area. The maximum allowable clearing is fifteen thousand eight seventy-five and this application proposes to clear nine thousand six hundred and fifty of that, but there's no existing, you're right, Roy.
So, so we don't have a basis point for establishing how much dune vegetation is being cleared.
It's a very good point.
That's just a point that I wanna make to the board.
Yeah, it's a very good point. And maybe-- Tyler might have some information on that, but from the survey, I don't see it as well.
Should we wait to have the hearing?
I think we want to keep going on with the public hearing nonetheless, right, Roy? That's certainly something we have to address. So thank you for bringing that up, Roy. Any questions on the field report? Other questions, board members? Okay. Sure, let me, uh, yeah, we're all good on that? Okay, good, good. Are you the agent for, Joe, you the--
No.
Oh, no.
You'll have a, you're with the public?
I'm a public person.
Yeah, you--
There'll be a comment area for you.
No, you can't, Joe, you can't, sorry, you can't speak from there anyway.
The public.
And, and the way it goes is we have the applicant or their agent speak and then the planning department and then anyone in the public, okay? Well, you can't, sorry, but you can't, Joe-- Oh, why are you here? I'm just curious. And you live next door? Can you come up to, I'm gonna let you come up, Joe, just for this, just so we know why you're here and everything. If, could you give us your name and spelling for the last name?
Joseph Wojcik, one fifty-three Atlantic.
And Joe, could you spell your last name?
My house might be here. Yeah, I think that's my house.
Okay, great. Could you, just for Denise, we need your last name for the record spelled.
W O I C I K.
You got that, you good Denise? Good. Okay, sorry. So you're right up the street. Can you point it out again, Joe, what number you're at?
Well, to the best of my ability.
Oh, we have a map with, what's your street address?
What are you, one fifty-three?
One fifty-three, okay. So you're in the back of Flag Lot back there, correct?
Yeah. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I think that's it.
So it might benefit you to wait till the public hearing?
No, but I just wanna know, I came in on the time that the sign said and I just kinda wanna know what this hearing is about.
Well, that's what we just started. So basically you have to sit down and listen, Joe. You gotta sit down and listen. If you wanna be a part of the hearing, you can't, we can't let-- Okay? This hearing is about what I just read. I just read what it was about and that's what it's about, what they're proposing. But the way it works is again, we give them the cha-- they get the first shot, planning department, then public, okay? But it's nice to come out, we appreciate it.
I think you'll get a sense, you'll get a sense of it as you go.
Right. I, I--
You didn't miss anything. That's the point. You didn't miss anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Attorney appearing for the applicant and is Adam Miller Group, Brian De Sessa, twenty-four sixty-two Main Street. In conjunction with East End Land Planning and Katie Osiki who filed the planting plan and some of the application that the board was referencing earlier. We're here for an application at the property located at one seventy-five Atlantic Avenue. The property in question is surrounded on two sides, as the, as the chairman indicated, by town parking lot, one side by road and one side, as you'll see on the attached exhibit, by the property of one seventy-one Atlantic. There is no wetlands within the area. The, the project does benefit from a letter of non-jurisdiction from the DEC indicating that it's over three hundred feet away from the title wetlands. The applicant proposes to replace the existing structure, two structures, with a new single-family residence which includes pool, deck and accessory structure as, as the chairman had read. All new structures will comply with zoning, including clearing, coverage and gross floor area. The project construction does not require a single variance and is fully compliant within the zoning code and the legislative intent of that chapter. Mitigating factors for this board to consider includes an upgraded septic system to a new IA system. The system currently on the property is an old block system. The removing, removal of two non-conforming structures in the site, specifically the existing house and cottage. Both of them currently were erected prior to zoning but would violate zoning now. As the pictures indicated, to the south, it is based, the structure's basically on the property line and kind of looms over the town parking lot. The proposed house and improvements are centered on the middle of the lot. The applicant submitted by letter and plan a revegetation plan which amounts to ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet of diverse material. As well, in addition to that, a dedicated twenty-foot scenic easement buffer to the eastern side of the property which would back up to and complement the part of the town parking lot that is currently vegetated. In the photos that you saw in any site visits, the vegetation that surrounds the property outside of the property lines obviously is proposed to stay. So looking at the driveway, you have approximately thirty feet of that vegetation before you hit the property line and before any of the activity which would conform the zoning is proposed. The applicant does have a health department permit which was submitted as part of the file as well. All proposed improvements conform again to East Hampton Town Code with respect to setback, coverage, clearing, pyramid law. DEC again issued a letter of non-jurisdiction on the property. The applicant proposes the project and shows on a survey of Stephen Borilsky that the building coverage is proposed to be four point three six percent where twenty percent is allowed and thirty-nine point two six percent of total coverage where fifty percent is permitted. We did hand in, as you have an exhibit of a map of the area, two of the properties which had recently been redeveloped. One is at one fifty-nine Atlantic Avenue and identified on that chart where the building coverage was nineteen point six seven percent. And the total coverage on that property was forty-five point five three percent. And current clearing on that lot is ninety-three point one eight percent. The other recent project which the applicant considered in coming up with the plan was one sixty-three Atlantic Avenue where the permitted building coverage of that lot is fourteen point three three percent. The total coverage for that, that lot was nineteen point nine percent and the clearing on that lot was fifty-six point nine percent. Again, here, the applicant is proposing building coverage of fourteen point three six percent, total coverage of thirty-nine point two six percent and clearing of forty-one percent. I do have the architect, Will Miner, here tonight who did render, just so I can hand up to the board, for a perspective view from standing in the town parking lot with the proposed planting plans as to what would be visible. It's our, we will submit less impactful from what's there now as the current house basically is on the property line over the parking lot. We're pulling everything back from the, from the public road, from the public parking lot and upgrading the systems. I'll submit that if the board wants to take a look at that. The beach vegetation that is proposing to be disturbed is more than being adequately covered in the revegetation plan as well as the twenty-foot buffer. Again, there's a proposal to revegetate ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet and on top of that dedicate a twenty-foot buffer to the eastern side which would both block and further set every, all activities back from the town parking lot as well as for the applicant. The proposed improvements again are all within town zoning and we're here for a natural resource special permit and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Yeah, I have a question. Part of, part of this town zoning is from, from a perspective that you're pointing out from setbacks and that's one thing. But also we have to look at two fifty-five four and two fifty-five five, which is our natural resources and how they're going to be diminished, the existing is going to be diminished as a result of this project.
I did hear your question. I don't have the existing clearing, but I'd ask, the record remain open and I can provide tomorrow in a written, or the next--
Yeah, I know, but, but it looks like the, almost a hundred percent of the existing vegetation which, you know, the, especially the T A M points out as far as dune land vegetation, which, by the way, in four, in two fifty-five four and two fifty-five five, the town goes through explicit detail on defining those natural resources that are being protected. Number one of them being dune and dune--
Vegetation.
Yeah, vegetation.
We did address that in a written submission. I didn't go over all of that.
Right, but, so my question is, we're going from, my question is, we're going from an area that has all appearance, appearance of dune vegetation and the photo that you just planted is, doesn't look like anything like that at all. So we're, we're, we're taking--
Sure, so the--
We're drastically changing the, with, I don't, you know, the vegetation, something much more formal.
So that's, that, those are eastern red cedars that are proposed on the property line. The existing vegetation outside of the property line couldn't be rendered on that. That's rendering from the property line in. The thirty feet to the west, the plus or minus ten to the south, and again, the thirty to the east on the town property first remain.
Okay, so where, where would these, where would these trees be? Because it looks like the, the stockade fence is behind them.
They're on the property line. So if you look here--
But the stockade fence is on the property line, on the survey.
I can have, the trees were to be on the property and the sur-- and this fence was to be inside of that line. So, 'cause everything would be planted on the subject property, not on the town right of way. So I can have the survey revised for that. And to go back to your question on-- Additional clearing will happen in the middle. The twenty-foot buffer is, is staying. It's not proposed to be cleared and revegetated. The area, the center of it, and I will get that clearing percentage for you. Of existing, we have the proposed, which the chairman indicated before, and I'll get the existing to this board.
Are you suggesting that you're going to be keeping what's within the property line? How much of it is, is it gonna remain in its current condition?
The--
Within, within the property line. How much are you changing what's inside?
There's a, there's a twenty-foot strip on the eastern side remains untouched. There's a, the area on the northern side remains untouched. The area on the southwest side, the corner, remains untouched. The construction activity is on the center of the property.
Right, but you're saying the north, the north side, you have got your whole sanitary system, you've got a one-story rec room going in that's only thirteen feet
Correct.
of the property line and you've got a drywall that's going in, in between there. So I can't imagine how you're gonna construct all that stuff and keep anything on the north. And you've got an existing cottage to be removed, so--
Correct. That's gonna have--
You see the whole north side being wiped out.
I can confirm that with them, but I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I know, I know the other parts are correct.
The project limiting fencing is right on--
Right on the edge. Limiting fence goes right up to the property line, so, yeah, so I think you just maybe misspoke then, but because your limiting fence goes right up to the property line as Terry says.
And along the, the border with the parking lot, with the town--
To, to which side? Because it's on all--
The south side.
Yep.
Between the, the beach parking lot and, yeah, right there, right where your hand is. What, what's going to happen on your client's side of that property, of that line?
The houses, the existing houses proposed to be demolished. The, on the line is the proposed planting of the eastern red cedars.
Right.
Inside of that's a fence and then there's revegetation as you see on the revegetation plan.
What revegetation is that?
One submitted, that was part of East End--
Brian, just while we're picking on you about this limits of clearing and all, just so you know, if you look on the southeast corner of the of your survey, which has proposed two-story residence, finished floor fifteen feet and on that corner of the house and there's a balcony, you're showing the limits of clearing about three feet away from a two-story, three feet away from a two-story house and balcony. And that's just, you know, this board typically, what we wanna see, we really don't care what you're gonna promise us. If you promise us you're not gonna touch the three feet, we don't believe you. So we're pretty much--
I can ask them.
You can't physically do it with a one-on-one slope.
If you're doing a sheet piling or something, really, that we can trust you, but--
Okay, I can, I can ask them.
I'm being sarcastic, but not too much because we typically want to see a minimum, board members, as about ten feet, as I recall, we typically, as a bare minimum.
Unless there's another construction method.
Okay. Construction methods and we all know that you need to get equipment around, you need scaffolding. You know, it takes room to build a two-story house. Okay?
If we're, just a question regarding the clearing itself. If they're going to be over-cleared at any point, they would require a temporary clearing variance, I believe.
Right. So--
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think we need to--
We need to leave this record open.
Can I ask to keep this open and I can provide some additional info?
Yeah.
I would just ask for that at this--
Yes.
I mean, obviously--
And what we're asking for, as you know, and there may be more at the end of the evening, is-- You obviously know what Roy's looking for. We're looking for existing clearing.
Correct.
But I'm also, you know, and again, I think if we're gonna keep the, keep it open, I think that it seems, it does seem like, and the T A M also mentions it, is that it appears this, this property is, is maxed out for the property which doesn't take into the count the dune habitat that exists in this area. And also, maybe, Brian, if you can address, it also appears that this area is somewhat cottagey in terms of neighborhood?
Um, I would, except for the, you know, we, if you look at the recently redeveloped houses, they are more in the style of of what the direction we're proposing and what was there. The most recent being, you know, one fifty-nine and one sixty-three Atlantic.
Yeah, but the one you're comparing at one fifty-nine Atlantic is twenty-one hundred and seventy-two square feet on a point thirty-one acre parcel and you're proposing thirty-three hundred and seventy-four square feet on--
Point five five.
Point fifty-five.
Right.
But that's, that's just a residence.
And that's just, yeah, exactly.
Then you got the, the hardscape that's--
Then you have a lot more going on than the other parcel.
Which is, which is, I think, much for this property.
I think also you should consider the fact that, you know, this parcel is right next to a parking lot which is what, that parking lot is used by a lot of people. Come to East Hampton and this is their exposure to East Hampton and to the beauty of the dunes and to what, what it's all about down there. And this parcel is unique in that respect, obviously. It's right on top of the parking lot. And I think that some respect for the dunes needs, ought to be shown there. I, I, I think that when, when we see something like this, these cedars, you know, lined up--
We, we could change this.
I, I, I mean, look, you're gonna go, you obviously have to--
Come back.
Come back. When you do, you might wanna consider the unique aspects of this parcel and to my mind's eye, the, the way it impacts the town and its most valuable, or one of its most valuable resources which is the dunes and the beach and the interplay of this particular parcel with the folks who've come here and see the dunes and the beach.
So I'd like to--
Well, well, well.
So to Sam's point, I'd just like to--
We've lost electric before.
He didn't like your answer.
No, 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 I did. I'm getting support.
Yeah.
So just to Sam's point, I just wanna make, make this point. We're looking, you've submitted this big package here.
Yep.
I'm not looking, we're looking for you to submit a survey that shows the existing clearing.
Yeah.
I'm not looking to give you a chance to come back and redesign your, your plans. You know, that's not the point of this.
No, I understand.
So just so we're clear on that, you're welcome to listen to Sam and if you wanna come back and, and re, and rethink some of your species, but but I, I don't wanna say, you know, we're gonna give you another shot at it.
No, I'm not looking to redesign the project, but to answer the board's question.
You submitted this application and we want some additional information.
Correct, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm prepared to submit and speak on on that.
Because we're ruling on this application. We're, we're not gonna--
Right.
No, I'm not looking to change the application, but I wanna--
Okay.
Answer the questions to the board.
Can you, can you just bring up why you're bringing up one sixty-nine Atlantic, during that pre-existed adoption of zoning? I'm just curious why that's an example here?
Just because that's, that's in the community. So it was part of the character of the analysis of what's there.
But it's not conforming and it would be non-conforming absolutely to today's standards.
And we're proposing conforming, so it shows we're moving more toward conformity and, and that was the intent.
Conformity in terms of setbacks, but not conformity in terms of dune preservation.
Well, we, we believe we are, but.
Okay, any other?
In the planning memo, it does reiterate, reiterate what Sam's point is and Roy's, that this is part of the East Hampton Scenic Area statewide significance and discourage alter, discourages alteration of dune, dune habitat and any natural terrain for residential house sites. The importance of maintaining native plants, which this property is filled with. There are northern bayberries all over it and other native plantings, so.
We, we can look this up, but I'm wondering if you have a sense for which of these properties were developed after the lifeguard station was located where it is?
I have to get back, because I don't know the exact timeline on that, but I can get that answer when I resubmit the survey and come back.
It gets to the character of the neighborhood and what it is there today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, board members for Brian?
No.
No? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Very good.
Okay, we have from the planning department next on this application?
No, 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 no.
Good evening again. Tyler?
Good evening. Tyler Borzak for the planning department. So a little of this will be going over what's already been stated. But the application before the zoning board represents a fairly aggressive redevelopment of a dune land property. The parcel contains extensive dune vegetation and topography, which will be greatly impacted by the proposed construction. The dune land characteristics and vegetation make the area unique and should be preserved to the maximum extent practical when redeveloping a property. The property is across the street from a large locally and federally preserved dune habitat. The plant communities present, present on and around this parcel have become less common throughout Long Island and the entire mid-Atlantic region in general, and such, and are difficult to reestablish in areas that are cleared during construction activities. The most effective measure of conservation in these areas is to limit the quantity of land clearing to the smallest area practical. Dune, the dune vegetation provides important habitat for both plants and animals, which require its unique characteristics to survive. Parcel is located within the East Hampton Scenic Area statewide significance, which discourages the alteration of dune, dune habitat, and natural terrain for residential house sites. It also notes the importance of maintaining native plants to retain the visual character of the area and encourages the designing of properties to fit into their neighborhoods and limit overdevelopment. The project as a whole seems to be designed to nearly maximize the development of any lot of these sites, regardless of the presence of dune land habitat and vegetation. The residence is proposed to be 3,790 square feet in gross floor area, where the maximum allowable is 3,950 square feet. Lot coverage proposed to be 14.36% and total lot coverage to be 39.26%. Final clearing limits are shown as 9,650 square feet, where 15,875 square feet would be the maximum allowable. Temporary clearing limits during construction would be significantly more than that. Whether they require temporary clearing variances, I'm not certain about. It's sort of flip-flopped in the past. I know there have been applications where they don't require them, even if they do go over temporarily, and I know there have been ones that have been granted in the past, but that would have to be something that, a separate conversation.
Tyler, let me interrupt, please, for a second to that point. I wonder, since Brian, if, since, you know, we're asking you to get the, the existing clearing, right? I think that, I have a feeling the board agrees with, with me that some of your project limiting fence is not realistic. I personally, in that survey, I would like to see, you know, a minimum of 10 feet separation between constructions and project limiting fences. And, and I think to, to the point about this possibly needing a temporary clearing variance, we would need to see, have your survey after they make that adjustment to your project limiting fence and your proposed clearing. We, we, we would need to see those, those numbers as well, okay?
Okay.
Correct, Tyler, that way we can ascertain if it's.
Right. Well, yeah, they show, they show the.
They show the clearing.
They don't show a number for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would imagine they probably try to limit it to at least be the maximum allowable. I doubt they'd want to go for clearing variance.
Okay, thank you, Tyler.
And it, again, it's much easier to maintain undisturbed dune vegetation in place compared to reestablishing it after it's been disturbed from construction. You leave it open to possibly invasive species coming in and, and things of that nature. Does not appear that much effort was put into minimizing the amount of clearing or the size and extent of the proposed improvements. The project also includes a retaining wall for the sanitary system, which necessitates some extensive regrading across the property. In a submission to the board, and as was discussed tonight, the applicants referenced a few surrounding properties, especially 159 and 163 Atlantic Avenue, which they found to be comparable to the current application. These properties, which receive zoning board approvals, are difficult to draw comparisons to, since both parcels were in front of the zoning board for being within jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands only. Neither property required a natural resource special permit for the clearing of dune vegetation, since they both had extensive pre-existing clearing on them, as, as was at the time of those applications. The board should be sure to examine this application closely and determine if the amount of clearing disturbance and size of improvements proposed meets the N R S P standards and are in keeping with the past practices of the zoning board. The application applicant needs to demonstrate that the dune habitat and vegetation will not be diminished in size, degraded, or lost in order to establish the proposed project. And especially important is that the N R S P standards require if there's inadequate upland area, which this whole parcel is dune land vegetation, so there would be, that alternative designs entailing smaller buildings or structures or reconfigured areas are determined not to be effective in preventing the loss or potential damage to the dune vegetation. The general permit standards also require that the project may be completed without undue disturbance or disruption of natural features, and that it is compatible with its surroundings. Other than that, I can answer any questions my have.
Thank you, Tyler. Board members?
Can you just repeat the two properties that you cited?
They were the ones mentioned in the, the submission. It was 159 and 163 Atlantic Avenue.
Fifty-nine.
One had an administrative application for freshwater wetlands, and that's, I think that was the 163. And the 159, I think, had one or two applications. That property actually had two single-family residences on it, which they reduced to one and then got a variance from the wetlands.
The ones with the red.
Right.
And 159.
And 159. And these were.
These two here.
And these were only freshwater wetlands, no N R S Ps for dunes.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you can see how much clearing there is. This one looks almost completely clear, if, if not, yeah, completely already, which is the way it was several years ago, 2008, I want to say, but I'm not 100% certain on the date.
And do you know off the top of your head whether any of these properties cited have been in front of the Z B A recently since the lifeguard station was installed?
I don't remember when the lifeguard station was finished, but I don't remember seeing any applications that were remotely recently. 2012 may have been the most recent.
Yeah.
But, again, I don't remember the specific date.
I think the opening, they just had their second kind of summer lobster thing, right? It's like about two and a half years.
It's only been two or three years.
Something like that, maybe. I think it might open this spring.
Okay.
Thanks, Tyler. Any questions, board members for Tyler?
Good.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Okay. Joe, would you like to speak?
See, you didn't miss anything. Yeah, but it's a little, it's a little confusing to keep track of, I have to say. I like to just say how important it is to not clear a lot of land. I live next to that, the project, one of the projects that you guys were talking about that has a whole bunch of stuff cleared. And what these folks managed to do is I preserve my natural habitat. I have a house. That house has been my family for a very long time, and I would like to keep it. Obviously, I'd like to keep it that way. What the folks next to me did, I think it could be probably 159, is they cleared a tremendous amount of land, got some setbacks, got a whole bunch of stuff. And what they've managed to do is they put their parking lot, their driveway, right up against my property. And what that entails is that there is this iron guard that they set into the ground that cut the roots from underneath the ground from all of my vegetation and flora and dunes and, and natural stuff. And then they put these blue stones that, so now whenever they drive their, their Land Rovers or whatever these vehicles are, up and down, very close, immediately on my property line, it sounds like they're landing a 747. All these rocks continuously come over to my vegetation, and because all these roots were cut, my vegetation is just not doing well at all. And it's a very sorry thing to see. You can just see, just the massacre of, of the stuff that I, that I had, that I was proud of, and, and it seems a shame. This is part of the double dune situation. I obviously haven't looked at the application. It seems kind of ridiculous on one end to say that you're going to preserve all this stuff, and the town has built this tremendous parking lot, so I feel sorry for the applicant. But they bought the land, and you just shouldn't clear everything, because I just gave you an example of why. And with regard to the history, I mean, the, the lifeguard station took, I don't know, this was like a 15-year project, so obviously a lot has gone on since. These two residences, as you were pointing out, these new developments on Atlantic Avenue, really came about from wetland setbacks and things. But I have to say, the amount of clearing, right, from that property, there is no vegetation on that property next to my house. When they drive their car, it bounces off, the sound, okay, bounces off from their structure and just comes to me as if it's landing a 747. So I, I appreciate what this gentleman here said, that, that this is in a place that people come to see the dunes, the beach grass and everything else. So you guys should do some of, you know, do what's right for the community, preserve some of this stuff to the best that you can. I guess that, that's, that's all that I say, so.
Well, thanks, thanks for coming out, Joe. We appreciate it. When, when public comes out and speaks, it makes a difference. Sure, please.
My wife. Lives there with me.
Yeah, good evening.
Tricia Wojcik at 153 Atlantic Avenue.
Did you get, did you get that, Denise?
We did.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. So I just, I have more questions than, than anything else, and I don't know if this venue is where we should be doing this, or I should have prepared this in advance. I'm not sure.
You can start with one or two, but otherwise, I'm probably going to ask you to go speak with Tyler if you have follow-up questions about it.
Okay. So, so just so, I, I think on record, I think there was some questions about the timing of the, the life-saving station.
Yes.
And these houses. And so, ones, that 163 is before the life-saving station, and 159 is kind of in line.
Right.
In the same time. But I, in terms of the character of the block, I think these two houses are very unique to the block. And I think you've seen it, the block is not necessarily, looks like these two houses and this third house that's being proposed. And if I, if I count right, there's five houses that are kind of the, the, that kind of shaped the character, and the one that was there before, 159, was the same. So there's five versus two, and so I would say the majority of the houses on that block are more of the Coast Guard kind of look. And so for me, this house would not, the way, I haven't seen this photo, so I would like to see that photo if I could, but it seems as though it doesn't really blend with the character.
Right.
Or even though there is this precedent. And it seems like the nature of the block is just changing into these huge houses where there's no light. And so if we're trying to preserve those things for the community, a nice place to be, I think that that doesn't do that. And then I guess what I would ask is just, if there is a revised copy of the survey, would we be able to see that?
You can see the whole, I was going to say, you can see the whole file, everything we have here.
Mm-hmm.
If you come tomorrow, or whenever you can, to the planning department.
Mm-hmm.
Right over there in the building next to Pentagon Place.
Okay.
And you just ask them, tell them you were at the Z B A meeting last night, and Denise will help you out, or Adrian will help you out.
But those revisions won't be there.
You can take the whole file, you can look at everything.
But the revisions won't be in place.
No, but when they come in, you could, yes.
Right. So I just want.
Well, you'll know when they're going to be in, because he's, we're going to give him a time, and you can always check back.
Right. I would also suggest that maybe if they want to, if they do do that and want to, we're going to keep the record open.
Right.
Obviously, so if they want to submit a letter as a result of what they.
Yeah.
That'd be fine. If you want to review the file and.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You're welcome to do. I think, since you came out this evening, I think that's a good suggestion, Roy.
When the matter is, when, when the, we discuss the matter, we look at everything in the record. So if there was a letter from you in the record, it would be something that we might look at.
Yeah, and that way you can go look at the whole file, you see what it is, and you'll know that they're going to make some adjustments, but I don't imagine the revised survey, besides some clearings and a few lines being moved, is going to be much different.
Will be very different from what's currently there.
This is the application, you'll pretty much see what they're, they're proposing here.
Okay.
And then we'll let you, we'll leave it open for a certain amount, and we'll let you submit a record.
I also know that a neighbor that's right next to this proposal wanted to come, but could not make it tonight. So I don't know how, they're right next to this.
They were, they were noticed. See, they were neighbor, they were noticed and they knew this was happening.
Yeah, I know.
And they could have submitted a letter, so we really can't.
Okay.
Start doing, doing that. But you did come out this evening, you spoke, and you didn't, so I think it's fair.
I appreciate that. Okay.
And your neighbor can do the same thing, go in and look at it at any time.
Because it's open.
Are we going to leave it open, so do we do that? Do we just leave it open for the?
Yeah, we leave it open for all purposes.
Okay, so she can do it. Okay, great.
Okay, I'm good with that. That's fine.
Thank you.
You got to come up, Joe, you got to come up tonight.
I hope I'm correct on this. The absurdity that went on was, was when they put this rail and they put their driveway so close on the property line that they can't even now build a fence or put shrubs up. They actually have to put the shrubs and the fence on my property if I want to do anything like that, because this driveway is right there.
Joe, I have to tell you, though, you, you were noticed on that hearing. That would have been the time to come out.
Well, we did. I opposed that, and I wanted to keep that.
Okay, okay. So just so you know, we, we, you know, that's a good point, it's good to know about, but.
But that's nuts. That is just a nuts situation that can happen.
But, Joe, we're not talking about that lot right now. We really can't.
No, I know, I'm just giving, I'm.
We heard you loud and clear.
I'm, right. I, I appreciate that. That house is next to me. I don't expect you to take it down now, okay? Obviously, I'm not an insane lunatic. However, that's just how poor things, that, that situation can go. It's an example.
Okay.
So keep your eyes open, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, we appreciate it. So, Brian, how much time do you need for your?
Thirty days?
Okay.
To submit.
Great.
So that would give us, what's that, November, what's today's date?
Twenty-third.
November twenty-third, which is Thanksgiving.
Oh, Thanksgiving Day.
That Monday after Thanksgiving.
You can have whatever you want.
Whatever you like, your application.
Yeah, hold on, sorry. Forty days or whatever you need.
Monday after.
So the 26th?
I think 22nd is Thanksgiving.
I could have the, the 28th.
Okay.
Of November.
Okay. And then, so you'll have the 28th of November, we'll close the written record, okay?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think there's no more speakers, so I will make a motion, board members, in the matter, in the matter of 175 Atlantic Avenue LLC at tax map number 300-178-2-3 at 175 Atlantic Avenue in Amagansett, to close the public hearing and leave the written record open until November 28th, 2018.
Second?
Can you?
Can you?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
For Adrian. Can you just outline exactly what you want? Can you kind of get in the habit of doing that?
Sure. Well, we're leaving, okay, so I'll start, so we're asking, what we're looking for is, the applicants are going to submit a revised survey that depicts the existing clearing, and we are requesting that they update their project limiting fence so that it's at least 10 feet away from anything that's been.
Well, I don't know.
Poor construction methods.
It's kind of open.
No.
I would just ask that it's open, address your question.
I don't think it's right for us to stipulate how, how far away it should be.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, Roy.
I mean, that's, that's something that has to do with something.
Well, in the past, we have said, in the past, like if, you know, I can't believe you're going to build a two, two-story residence with only three feet to your project limiting fence.
I don't disagree with you.
And that's why in the past, this board has requested that these be drafted to a more realistic sense, and I...
Well, I would also say, if they're proposing one less than 10 feet, there should be a protocol of how they're going to address the construction.
Well, that's a very good point, I was going to say, you're right, that's a steel sheet piling or something.
If the record could remain open for the questions that were presented, and when I talk to the applicant, if there's a construction method that is a reason why it's not 10 feet, I would provide that as part of the answer to the question.
Okay, that's fine with that, okay.
And then same respect with the clearing, so that, I understand the record's open for purposes of answering this board's questions.
Right.
But how I answer them, I don't know yet until I talk to the applicant.
Okay.
I would ask not to limit how I can resubmit.
I would agree with that.
That's right.
We're leaving it open, let's leave it open.
Right. And if you can convince us that three feet is going to work, then so be it.
I don't know, I don't have an answer, but...
And whatever else you might come up with.
Correct, that's what I would ask for.
And then Denise, we, thank you, Brian, and then as well, we're leaving it open for our record, for...
Public comments.
For public comment.
That's all, that's all public.
So we will accept all letters, yeah.
It's all, so not just the folks who are here tonight.
Correct, correct.
Until that date.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's November 28.
We have a second?
Okay.
Got it?
I got it.
We good? Good, thanks Denise.
Do we have a second, did I hear a second? I didn't hear a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I get a second on that?
I seconded.
Concur.
And concur.
Now we all concur.
We all can.
Thank you, and Tim seconded, thanks Denise for that.
As a cloud.
Okay, thanks, Brian, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thanks for coming out.
I think the rain may have stopped.
What?
Nothing's happened, no, nothing happens till it gets through the process. Yeah, thanks, Joe. Okay.
We did our extension, okay.
We have a couple of...
Admin, we have this, we have Herb.
Yeah, so we, okay, we took care of the extension of time, and then we have a possible admin, administrative application, Robert Gold, K-O-L-D, and Brian, I mean, pardon me, Michael, is going to walk us through this.
Brian Junior.
Now you're in trouble.
Oh, that's a low bar.
Hello.
Sorry.
Caught him out of breath, knocked the wind out of Michael.
I've already got confused with Tyler multiple times.
Yeah. You can call him Tyler.
Both dressing plaid, it's hard to tell, and the beards.
I know.
The application for the board is one that I spoke about a couple of weeks ago, and you guys asked for a 10-foot vegetative buffer, I've reached out to the applicant, this is the bulkhead reconstruction on Isle of White, 31 Isle of White, I've reached out to them, they countered with a 10-foot no-mow zone, I reached out again after we spoke, and about doing a delineation.
Right.
And he's willing to do the no-mow zone, he really doesn't feel the need to do any planting or anything like that, this is, I mean, this is a lawfully pre-existing bulkhead.
Yeah, I think, I was thinking, it's great, it's going to be great to have this no-mow zone, and I was just trying to get something, you know, as we take with a lawnmower and...
I'm fine with that, understood.
I'm fine with that, yeah, yeah, I am too.
Do we have a motion?
Yep.
I don't have the tax map number yet.
Do we need, this is in Roy's district, yeah, do we need a...
Need the tax map.
307...
Oh, do we have an...
300-37...
Yeah.
-2-4.7.
Yep, right.
So before we make the motion, the reason we're okay without delineating in this case as opposed to other cases, I just want to talk that through.
I think it's a good question, I think the reason... Yeah, that's a good question, a good point. I think the reason is, is we're, I think, I know I'm pleased to have this, where right now it was going right up to the bulkhead, and we're getting a 10-foot no-mow zone, which we all know is a nice filter, we were looking for a little bit of an edge, but it would become a code enforcement issue if it was mowed, but I guess the reason I'm okay with it is because this is going to be nice to have this no-mow zone, and it, as Michael says, it's a, you know, an existing legal bulkhead the way it is right now without it, so I think that's why, Roy, do I speak for you as well?
What's there, so it's grass now?
That it's a nice thing to have.
He's willing to let it come in.
Let it just die out and do nothing.
Let the existing veg hopefully come in and see what's in feedback.
How is that in any way validated?
Enforced, you mean?
Yes.
Well, it would be, we would show that on, well, that's a very good point as well, it would be nice to covenant, do we have, it would be great, would we want that to be on the survey to show that we would really want, so that it could be enforced?
It would be on, I mean, it would be on the determination, and that would be able to be brought up and with any future applications, that it should be...
That there'd be a 10-foot mow.
It should be there, and it's something that, you know, if they want to expand, we could build upon, turn into a vegetated buffer, they were to expand the house or something like that, to, you know, if they're going to add anything to the property.
So it's a good question, so it would be determination, it would be in the determination...
Perhaps you have the survey there, could you pull that up, just...
How would a future owner be subject to that?
Wow.
Yeah.
They...
I'm thinking it'd be nice to have the line on the survey.
They would be, because it's part of the record.
It's part of the record, yeah.
However, is it, you know, would they actually know necessarily, possibly not?
So I think you'd...
It's not something that would come up in a title report.
Yeah.
It's not like an easement for...
Or an easement, or CNRs.
Or a CNO, right.
Yeah.
It's not that easy.
So I think if we're going to work, if they're working with us, sorry, counsel, sorry.
But it's still something that's enforceable, as it is part of the approved zoning board approval, which does go with the land.
I think it would be great, because this really is not much work for a surveyor, if we admit, as a condition, we just, that's delineate on the survey as a no-mow zone. Do you agree?
Yes, but I think we should use the phrase "natural revegetation" as opposed to "no-mow".
Well, they don't want, that's where it came up, we went and asked for a vegetated buffer, they came back and countered and said...
We won't mow it.
They don't want to go through the cost of all of that work, but they're willing to just not mow it, let the native plants grow back in.
Well, that's, we're saying the same thing.
We're saying the same thing, okay.
I just don't, do we have a category called no-mow zone?
They're creating it.
I don't remember that.
They do.
We've used them in the past.
We do. Okay, all right, so that's a new term.
And we'd say, natural vegetation, to remain no-mow zone, or something like that, right?
In the determination.
That's a good point, Tim, yeah, we'd want that somehow, and as well, it would, so if we had it on the survey like that, and as well in the determination, I feel a lot better that it's there and it can be enforced, and future zoning boards and other people, code enforcement or whatever, would see that.
And I think in this case, we're just making a bad situation a little bit better.
Yes, and we're happy to have it.
We are, and I'm only addressing the documentation act aspects of it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
The phrase "no-mow zone" doesn't appear in the town code, does it?
No.
Right.
Okay, therefore, I'd like to make a motion in the case of Robert Gold, 31 Isle of White Road, tax map number 300-37-2-4.7, to allow the process to go administratively.
Second?
Concur? Concur.
And I concur as well. Thanks, Roy. Okay, thanks, Michael. And board members, that's good to get that taken care of. And now we'll move on to, I just want to get to the specifics here. We have, now we'll move on to determinations. Michael, let's see, we have Herb, if you could walk us through this, Michael, please?
Correct, so Herb is a property located on Gloucester Ave. in Monzauck, and we went out for a CO inspection on this property that was subject to a ZBA determination in 2010. This is a copy of the survey that was approved. Also, on here is a scenic easement to protect Peter's Run in the rear of the property. What wasn't a part of it was actually revegetating the area back here, so it's kind of a windfall in this situation, because what happened when we went out there is that that whole area, all through here, was cleared further, over the board's previously approved number. So we asked for a modification to include revegetation to comply with the board's previous number, and we asked them to re-vigitate the scenic easement.
And this is why, this is why we look for these woody buffers.
Yeah. It was something that wasn't explicitly in the previous determination to re-veg the scenic easement.
Okay.
So we kind of got a win there, there were some other little changes. If you notice, on the previously approved survey, there was a cellarway underneath the proposed deck. It was denoted in the plans, but never on the survey, that they were going to have to put a cellarway over here, so they've done that as well, and it's no closer to the wetlands than any of the approved work. That's kind of the nuts and bolts of it.
And we're getting some good re-veg doing.
Yeah, we're getting a pretty hefty re-veg after some significant back and forth. I believe it's 4,314 square feet.
There's a modification.
Now, did they, is this, is the other cellar, are there two cellarways now, or did they just relocate them?
They removed this one.
Okay.
This is gone underneath the deck, yeah. I mean, maybe the remnants of it are, but it's covered by a deck.
So that survey, that's the one from September, September 20?
This is received September 28, the date, revised September 26, to include the proposed re-veg.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And just to be clear, I think it's 3,914 square feet of re-veg.
Yeah, 3,914.
I...
Get that documentation.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so, I'm looking to approve it.
Yep, yes.
Yeah, okay, so in the matter of John Herb, the modification for 55 Glass Ave.
You don't have to make a motion.
No, we don't have to.
Oh, I don't?
I'm going to bring in a determination.
Oh, okay, all right.
They're all on good form.
We're all good with that, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, thanks, Terry, thanks, Michael. Michael, next, you can stay right where you are, buddy. We have Lawrence next?
It's not me.
Oh, Lawrence, oh, yeah.
I'm not familiar with that one, I believe that was a letter.
That was the letter.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we are, is that...
No, we can't do it.
Yeah, that's the letter, can I have that letter?
We have to, they're asking to be extended 30 days for submission of a re-veg, which the hearing would have, I think, was open till tonight, and additionally, they're letting us know that they've discussed with the town building department that there is not a required separation distance between groundwater and the base of a footing. The item was discussed at your public hearing relating to certain footings to be employed regarding the additions.
Right, so this...
It's kind of covering two things.
Yeah, so this...
We need to extend the record, and they're letting you think there's no issue with the separation between groundwater and footings.
Right, so, thank you, Terry.
And just as a side note, I did receive a message from the agent for the applicant, who said that I guess the person doing the re-veg had a personal issue and wasn't able to complete it, and that's why there's...
Okay, so, thank you Denise and Beth, so, so board members, again, so if we give them, which I'm sure we're fine with, the 30-day extension, which I'm certainly fine with, to do this, we were talking at the planning department, how Anne Glenn and the building department handles this two-foot separation, I guess it might not be in the international code, which is what the building code is being followed now, and the New York State Residential, but it has always been a policy of the zoning board, council has told me that we can still make that a condition if we so wish, if we feel it's imperative, correct, council, is that correct, or did we want to talk with...
As long as there's a nexus between the condition and what the applicant is requesting...
Right.
Then you can make it a condition.
Right, right, so, and I think it'd be, I'd like to, I'd like to, just so I'm clear, have a conversation in these 30 days while we're waiting with the building inspector, and anyone else here obviously is welcome to do so as well, just to get her taken, where that's coming from, so that we kind of know better. I mean, in the future, you could see the nexus, certainly, I was, you know, it can certainly be, if there's a swimming pool near groundwater as far as drainage, it can be the impact on, you know, it has to do with compression and construction as well also, but as well, you know, depending on the specifics of each project, there really, there clearly could be a nexus there, so I guess, and in the past, we've dealt with it that way, you know?
I'm not clear what the nexus is, and I know that this has come up before, but perhaps, I think the policy origi, I don't know where the policy originated, was it from planning department? So perhaps we can get filled in on what the nexus is.
Yeah, you know, I discussed something, I asked Brian, and I'm not recalling one or two things that Brian, I asked Brian about this, Roy, the same thing, and unfortunately, with my little bit of a head cold, I'm not recalling.
You may want to request a petition in writing from the planning department.
Yeah, that would be good, I'd like to have that, I agree.
Right.
Yeah, Michael, and Denise, would you make note, maybe we'll make a note to Brian. Michael, is this yours, this is Brian's, who's this, Lawrence?
It's Brian.
Yeah, it's Brian's, and I was discussing it with him, so maybe we'll do that, I'd like to have that on the record as well, and I think it, because I think this, I know, since I've been on here four and a half years, we've, you know, we've used that often, and it would be good to know when we can and when it...
I know it's been used, but I'm not sure if it's, why.
Yeah, and plus, council can steer us on this as well.
I can agree on some...
Well, and I think the difference in this one, too, is it's only the footings on this house, which versus...
It's only the footings, right.
I understand the swimming pool, because...
Other situations where it might be the whole.
Yeah.
I understand swimming pools, but I don't understand footings.
Yeah, and that's probably why Anne Glenn does it that way as well. Okay, thank you all, so, so I guess, board members, we all agree, I think we all agree that we are going to give them the 30-day extension?
Well, do we need to open the record to extend it?
The record's still open, so you're just...
We're just keeping it open.
You're just keeping it open.
You can just extend, they're asking us to extend, I think it actually...
We need a resolution.
We don't have any...
We don't need a motion, you can just...
No, you make a motion to extend an additional 30 days.
Okay, we will.
Not a resolution, a motion.
Denise, can we have that letter up here, please, that letter that you have, please? Thanks.
Is this one on?
Yeah, that one, yep, yep, I didn't bring mine.
Roy, you need the tax map number on that?
It's on there.
It's on there.
All right, so Roy...
There you go, Roy, that's...
Therefore, I would like to make a motion in the case of Gillies Lorenz, 52 Square Road, Suffolk Tax Map Number 300-075-1-12, to allow, to allow the record to remain open an additional 30 days.
Can I just say that 30 days takes you to Thanksgiving?
Should we go to the 28th again?
So you may want to push it to the following Tuesday, which is the 27th of November?
Sure, and that way we'd have it for the...
27th, you said, Beth?
27.
27th, yeah, great, thanks, Beth, thanks, Brian.
Second to that. Concur.
Concur.
And I concur, thank you, Roy. Would you get that back? Thanks. Okay, good, now, board members, I'd like to hold off on the two board decisions, we[1580.33] We just heard them like last week, very recently, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
We'll keep them on the agenda, and if we have time, we can get to them next week, okay? For Stitt and 205 T M H L C. The minutes we've taken care of, we're going to hold off till next week and approve two of those, hopefully. And counsel, I believe we have, what, three resolutions this evening?
Why don't we do Rosenstein first?
Oh, we have an E A F to do there, yeah, I mean-
Yeah, I emailed the E A Fs to everybody today, however, I have hard copies.
Oh, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take one for the phone, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
So if you just want to go through this first, I also have the decision for the board tonight, which is so-
Oh, oh, good.
You know, whatever changes we need to make.
Okay, great. And if, and if not, otherwise, you have the decision written up, correct? You have it all written, good.
Yes.
So if we're all, okay, good. So, if we all concur, we're, yeah. So, board members, I have read through all of this, I imagine, I don't know if you all had, had time to?
I did.
Yes.
Good, okay, and I spoke to counsel, I think some of these we can kind of summarize, especially if we all agree with the E A F. Counsel said that would be okay. So, so I'll just get a start on this one here. We'll start off with number one, impact on the land. And again, for the record, it notes that proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. And, and we have a yes and a no. And these have all been ticked, the planning department is recommending that these all be ticked off, they tick off that, yes, there is, there is, may involve construction, they tick off that, yes, this may involve construction and physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. However, under all the specifics, A through A G, they tick off no or small impact may occur. And we've read through this, and I agree with, with your analysis there. If you all do, board members? Okay, great. And then, number, item two, impact on geological features, a proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unused, unusual landforms on the site, and they have ticked off no for that in total, which I, do we agree, board members?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Item number three, impacts on surface water, again, that this may affect the wet, more wetlands or surface water bodies, stream-driven response lakes, and they tick off no. Do we agree, board, with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Item number four on groundwater, again, that this may affect the additional use of groundwater, may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. They've ticked off yes on this. Item number four, however, items number A through G, pardon me, A through G, which are basically all the items, are ticked off as no or small impact may occur. We agree?
Yes.
Item number five on, impact on flooding, again, for the whole section, planning has, department has ticked off no. Do we agree?
Yes.
Item number six, impact on air, they have ticked off no for that whole section. Okay. Item number seven, impact on plants and animals, they have, I'll read this one, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna, and they have ticked off yes, it may. However, items A through D, A through E are ticked off as no. Do we agree with that, board members?
Yes.
And item F is ticked off as yes, the proposed action may result in the removal of or groundwater, ground disturbance in any portion of the designated, designated significant natural community. And they tick off yes on there, and I'm sure we agree with that.
Reference to the water recharge over there.
Exactly, thank you. Yep, thank you, Sam. And then, they go back for items G and H to ticking off no, and, and item I as well, no. And I guess we agree on that, correct?
Yes.
Item eight, impact on agricultural resources, they, for the whole section, have ticked off no. Do we agree, board?
Yes.
Item number nine, on impact of aesthetic reasons, again, they've ticked off no. Do we agree?
Yes, we do.
Item number 10, impact on historic or archaeological resources, they've ticked off yes. However, items number A through C, they've ticked off no, and, and that's it. So I guess we agree with that.
Do we know why, why they said yes to begin with?
I guess-
Because it had, it had no or small impact.
Yeah.
When they have a yes, it means that it's coming in on-
Yeah, I don't call it no impact.
But what's, what's the historic or archaeological resource? I don't, I just didn't understand why it was yes.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure. They took, well, they say it may, I guess because they're saying yes, that what they're saying is yes, in effect, in fact, in effect, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic archaeological resource, and they note-
I don't know, did they identify any?
I don't understand what ar-
I don't know.
No.
I don't think so.
I would think that would be a no.
Can we change that to a no then?
We can change that to a no.
I agree.
I agree with that as well.
I agree.
Is it because there's a preserve next to it?
That's what I was wondering, if there's something that was nearby.
Historic?
No, there's not, no, granted, it's not that.
I mean, they-
Is there a cemetery nearby?
I don't see it.
No, this one.
I don't remember anything being identified.
I, I thought there was a preserve next door.
There's a reserve, a reserved area on one side of the property.
It's a reserved area.
But it's not historic or- There's a bridle path down one side, there's a reserved area in the back, there's scenic easements in the back.
Is the bridle path historic?
No.
It seems like a stretch.
So let's just revise this one, board members.
George Washington's law.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so, board, I'm going to-
I don't see anything in the technical analysis memo that states that there's any
Yeah.
Historic. I would, I would think it would be a no.
Yeah, I would see it, Tim.
It sounds like we all agree, so I'm changing this council to a no, and I'll initial it just so we have it here, if that works.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, board. And that takes care of item number 10. Item 11, impact on open spaceship, space and recreation, they tick off no for the whole sec, section, do we agree?
Mm-hmm.
Item 12, they, this is impact on critical environmental areas, I'll read this, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, C E A C, okay, and they tick off yes. And then, they tick off on item A, that it may result in a reduction of the quality of the resource or the characteristic, which was the basis for designation of the C E A. And they're, and they've ticked off moderate to large impact may occur on that. And item B, that this may result in a reduction of the quality of the resource or the characteristics for, the same thing, for which the, was the basis for the designation of the C E A, they tick off yes, moderate to large impact may occur.
I agree.
Okay, so we agree on that, okay? Item 13, impact on transportation, they've ticked off no, we agree?
Mm-hmm.
Item 14 on energy, impact on energy, no, do we agree?
Yes.
Item 15 on, on impact on noise, odor and light, they ticked off no, do we agree?
Yes.
Item 16, impact on human health, they've ticked off no, do we agree?
Yes.
Consistency, item 17, consistency with the, with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans, they've ticked off yes. And item A and B, they've ticked off no. Item C, I'll read, because they ticked off yes, that the proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans and zoning regulations. And then, for the rest, items D through G, they tick off no. Do we agree, board, on that?
Yes, we do.
Mm-hmm.
See, it's a moderate to large impact.
Yes, thank you, it's a, yes, moderate to large impact may occur. Okay, we're getting there. 18, consistency with community character, they've ticked off yes, that, that this proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. And they have ticked off on items A through E, no. On item F, proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape, they have, they have ticked off yes, moderate to large impact may occur. And I'm sure we all agree on that, board members?
Yep.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to that.
To part three.
To part three now. The evaluation of the magnitude and the importance of project impacts and determination of significance. And the planning department recommends that the secret status here is a type one action. And they identify portions of the E A F completed for this project, that would be part one, part two, and part three. And, let's see, moving along down, the planning department has picked off, ticked off on, on page two of two on this. Item B at the top of the page is checked, although this project could have a significant adverse impact on the environment, the impact will be avoided for substantially mitigated, pardon me, or substantially-
Do you want to change this, well, depending, that, the B is for a condition, nag deck, however, this was prior to the applicant agreeing to revegetate.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So you may want to, so I don't know if that necessarily applies anymore, since they're already doing the condition that this would require.
Yeah, and, right, because they noted revegetation to be compliant. So we might want to, let's see, do we go to-
So then, look at A.
Do we tick off C, maybe?
No, A.
A. No significant adverse, no significant, because they're coming back and they're reveging much more than they were-
So the project as a whole is proposing to revegetate.
Right.
So.
Because no major-
Does that sentence underneath B still apply?
I don't think so. Here's what it says-
No.
For the record, it says revege, the sentence he's, Sam's referring to says revegetation to be compliant with East Hampton Code 255 dash 3 dash 65E, water recharge overlay district clearing-
Right.
Regulations, that would be no, because they're not going all the way, but they're going the good way.
Right.
That's correct.
Right. So it's not, it's not part of A.
So-
Is there any place that we, that, that this should indicate what it is they're going to do?
No, it will in the decision.
In the decision, okay, fine. All right.
So counsel, do we agree then, and board members, we want to tick off A, on revises to A?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll do that in red, and I'll initial that as well, okay?
Just for the record, right above that, it does identify the zoning board of appeals as the lead agency.
Yes.
That's why we're doing this exercise.
Exactly. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, yep. Okay, let's see, going down.
I think that's it.
The fact that Lisa's name is still in there, should, does that need to be changed?
Nope, she prepared it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, great, good, good. Okay. Okay, so we're all set on that.
Do you have to make a motion?
Okay. So, do we have a tax map number, someone have that?
Probably on the front of the-
Right here.
Okay, great.
I have it if you need it.
Let me have it.
So my motion is, I'm basically vote, making a motion to adopt the E A F as, as-
You're making a negative declaration.
I'm making it, just simply a negative deck.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. With regard to the application of, this is Rosenstein, I believe, right?
Yes, Stuart Rosenstein.
Stuart Rosenstein, thank you. At 38 Hawx Nest Lane, Amagansett, New York, tax map number 300 dash 151 dash 4 dash 6, I make a motion with regard to secret that this be negative declaration.
Second.
Concur.
Concur. And I'll concur, just.
Okay, so Sam, Vice Chair Kramer did the second then, thanks, Jim. Okay, board members, counsel, we good on that?
We are good.
And then I have to sign this, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Do you know which page that is, counsel?
The last page.
The last page, okay.
Where it says, signature of responsible officer and lead agency.
Okay, let's run, make sure, make sure I give the one that I marked up, I think this one, actually.
What's that?
Fearless leader.
Yes. You had one more.
I had one marked up there. Oh, it's the last one I look at, right? It's usually the case.
Keep going, and there's something wrong.
Right. No, it's not it.
Where's the red ink?
Oh, where's the red ink? It was on the last page. On page two of two.
Red ink in a couple of places.
Yeah. Oh, here it is, I have it, I beg your pardon. Yes, okay, so I will sign this one here. And then I'll give this one to counsel that I've marked up. Okay.
Looks like an English paper I may have turned in in high school, with all the red marks on it.
Right. So we're October 23rd, correct? Okay, counsel, I'm just going to give this to you, is that correct?
Yes, I have the file, so I'll put it in the-
Thank you.
Did you stamp it, approve this, noted?
Received. Okay, great, okay. Thank you, Beth, for getting us back on track with that.
So then I have three determinations for the board's sign, adoption tonight, Travis Rathbone, Stuart Rosenstein, and Robin Katz and Mark Emanuel. And then I also have two, the modifications that the board discussed last week, Seth Leest and Gregory Zorko.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Everybody's been busy. Thank you. Okay, I'll just go in the order Beth gave them to me. The first here is, in, this is Travis Rathbone, and this is in board member Delene Springs District, Roy.
So, members, this is an application, another clearing application. The, we did get some mitigation out of this, and I'm trying to remember the amount.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
Yeah, 5,000. So again, this is one of those, you know, mitigated, overcleared. The board is unanimous in their decision to approve it. So with that, I'll make a motion in the matter of Travis Rathbone, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300 dash 24 dash 12, dash 12, to accept the application and determination with the, with the mitigation.
You're approving it, you're approving the-
Were, are we approving the application, or are we approving the determination?
You're approving the application.
The application.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second that. Concur. Concur.
Okay, thanks, Roy. Thank you. Okay, next we have Stuart Rosenstein, and this is at 38 Hawx Nest Lane in Amagansett, and this is in my district. And again, as we just went through the E A F there, this has to do with an overclearing, and, and this, we all, has been, has been resolved, and this was all concurred on the approval of this application, all board members did. So I will make a motion in the matter of Stuart Rosenstein at tax map number 300 151 dash 4 dash 6, at 38 Hawx Nest Lane in Amagansett, to approve the application.
Second.
Concur.